Distinguished delegates, the Secretary would like to remind members of the following mitigation measures that are in place for this meeting. All delegates are required to wear a face covering at all times whilst in public places and in the General Assembly Hall, except when directly addressing the meeting. All staff are also required to wear face coverings at all times. Disposable face masks are available if needed. All delegates are to refrain from direct contact, including handshakes and other physical contact during greetings, in recognition of the physical distancing requirements. All delegates should remain conscious of COVID-19 hand sanitizing and contact precautions. All movements and, if necessary, queuing require two meters physical distancing, and delegates are requested to minimize activity until seated in the meeting room. Statements delivered by the representatives who are physically present in the General Assembly Hall will be made from the national seats. With the assistance of the Occupational Safety and Health Representatives, the President will oversee the implementation of the mitigating measures in the course of the proceedings. If at any moment it appears that the guidelines are not being strictly observed, the President will have no choice but to draw the attention of delegates to these guidelines, or even suspend or adjourn the meeting as needed. Furthermore, I would like to remind delegates attending this meeting that, under the new COVID-19 contact tracing, existing building access cards are being used to record presence of attendees in the meeting rooms. In addition to swiping cards to gain access to the UN HQ premises, delegates and UN personnel are also requested to swipe access cards at the entrance of conference rooms. The information collected will only be used in case of a need for COVID-19 contact tracing and not for any other purpose. The data will be held for a maximum of 28 days. Thank you.
I call to order the informal meeting of the plenary to hear a briefing by the Special Envoy of the Secretary General on Myanmar. As announced in my letter dated 19th of February 2021, this meeting is held pursuant to paragraph 21c of General Assembly Resolution 75/238 of 31st of December 2020. I warmly welcome Ms. Christine Schraner-Burgener, the Special Envoy of the Secretary General on Myanmar, who is joining us via video conference. I'll make my opening statement from the rostrum. Excellencies, dear friends, dear colleagues, I once again warmly welcome the United Nations' Special Envoy, Christine Schraner-Burgener, to the General Assembly. I am very pleased she is able to join us to brief on the evolving situation at such a critical juncture for Myanmar. Let me start by reiterating my deep concern regarding recent developments in Myanmar, and my strong condemnation of the military coup and its worrying impact on the democratic process and civilian rule in Myanmar. Since the military takeover on 1st of February, an alarming number of arrests have been made, including the State Councilor Da Ong Sang Tsuk-si, President Uwun Mint, and other political leaders and advisers. The use of lethal force against peaceful demonstrators is particularly alarming. I am saddened that these actions have already resulted in the loss of innocent lives. My thoughts and prayers are with the friends and families of the deceased. I am also troubled by mass arrests of those involved in organizing peaceful protests. Peaceful assembly, association, and freedom of opinion and expression are fundamental pillars of any democracy and must be respected at all times. I note with concern the growing consolidation of power by the military in state organs, which undermine the democratic gains made by the government over the last few years. These steps risk pushing Myanmar back towards isolation from the international community. Dear colleagues, it is not too late for the military to reverse the negative trajectory on the ground and respect the will of its people. The military must exercise restraint and help foster a path back to civilian rule, in line with the outcome of the recent elections. I also call on all leaders to act in the interest of Myanmar's democratic reform, engage in meaningful dialogue, refrain from violence, and to fully respect human rights, fundamental freedoms, and the rule of law. Political detainees must be released immediately. Taking this opportunity, I reiterate my call on the military authorities to grant the UN Special Envoy, Ambassador Christine Schraner-Burgener, access to Myanmar, to assess the situation firsthand under agreeable conditions while fostering the conditions for a frank and open dialogue. And I also call for unity within the international community and member states. If you, we work together, you can, we can make a positive difference to this dire situation. In addition to the strong messages from me and the Secretary General, early statements from ASEAN, the OIC, EU, and subsequent 4th of February Security Council statement, among others, were positive steps in this regard. The international community must continue to stand united and speak with one voice in support of the democratic transition, as well as respect for human rights and the rule of law. Dear colleagues, excellencies, as we work to address the recent political turmoil in Myanmar, we must not forget about the plight of the Rohingya Muslims and other minorities. This is, after all, at the core of the General Assembly mandate and the basis on which today's meeting has been convened. I am deeply concerned about the humanitarian implications of the military's actions, particularly amidst the COVID-19 pandemic for vulnerable communities, including the Rohingya Muslims, ethnic minorities, women, and youth. I call for unrestricted humanitarian access to Rakhine State and other parts of the country. A year ago, the International Court of Justice ordered Myanmar to do everything possible to prevent a genocide against the Rohingya. This order retains its urgency. The safety and security of the Rohingya and other minorities must be secured. Their basic rights, including the right to full citizenship and the creation of conditions conducive to the voluntary, safe, dignified, and sustainable return of all Rohingya refugees and IDP's, must be respected. With these, I will now give the floor to the Special Envoy, Christine Schraner-Burgener, for her briefing to the General Assembly. I thank you. Before inviting the Special Envoy on Myanmar to provide a briefing, may I kindly remind delegations that, as indicated in my letter dated 19th of February, there is no pre-established list of speakers for this meeting. So delegations wishing to make interventions or pose questions to the Special Envoy after her briefing will be invited to press the microphone button on the console before them when the floor is opened. Delegations speaking on behalf of groups are invited to approach the list of speakers table and will be given priority. I now invite Ambassador Christine Schraner-Burgener, the Special Envoy of the Secretary General on Myanmar, to brief the membership.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the General Assembly. It is now exactly four weeks since I was in contact with all stakeholders in Myanmar, as the army insisted that the State Councilor Da Ong Sang Tsuk-si has to meet three conditions and threatened a takeover. She did not agree to these conditions, but dialogue appeared to follow, and I hoped until the end that the attempted coup would not take place. Unfortunately, it took happen. I told you in 2019 that I would sound the alarm if necessary. This is now the case. I'm ringing the alarm bells. I strongly condemn the recent steps taken by the military and urge all of you to collectively send a clear signal in support of democracy in Myanmar. At this moment, democratic processes have been pushed aside, and elected leaders, including the State Councilor An Sang Tsuk-si and President of the Union Republic, remain detained. I have warned many times that, as we support Myanmar's transition, the urgency in helping lay the foundations of a pluralistic democracy should be balanced with due consideration for the various complex domestic challenges the civilian leadership faces. I have tried again and again to explain the complex situation, namely that the army holds the real power. Three ministries were occupied by members of the army, and the police in particular were subordinate to it. Genuine democracy requires civilian control over the military. Twenty-five percent of parliamentary seats were reserved for the army under the military-drafted 2008 constitution. Changing the constitution requires more than 75% of votes. You can imagine the challenges this posed for the National League for Democracy, NLD Government, in its pursuit of democratic reforms. The military was not only an obstacle before, but has initiated reversing the process of many positive measures introduced by the NLD leaders. Instead of resorting differences to establish legal mechanisms, the military exploited difference to try to justify an attempted coup. I say "attempted": since the takeover has not stabilized, it would appear to be roundly rejected by the people. It is important the international community does not lend legitimacy or recognition to this regime. I also say "coup" because the military takeover and declaration of the state of emergency was a clear violation of the constitution, regardless of what they claim. Meanwhile, democratically elected representatives were able to be sworn in according to the constitution on 4th February and have formed the Committee representing Piadongul Lotur, the CRPH. These parliamentarians have courageously sought to uphold their obligations to serve the people who voted for them, and it is important they are given a platform. Mr. President, as I briefed the Security Council on 2nd February, the genuine will of the people of Myanmar must be upheld. The result of the election of November 2020 was clear, with 82% of the voters for the NLD. There is no justification for the military's actions, and we must continue to call for the reversal of this impermissible situation, exhausting all collective and bilateral channels to restore Myanmar's pass on democratic reforms. Despite attempts by the military and its appointed officials to justify its ongoing violations, including the killing of peaceful protesters and the continued detention of political leaders, civil servants, and others, let us be clear: there can be no business as usual under the current circumstances. Before this crisis, Myanmar was opening up, including economically, following decades of military rule. It had become interconnected to the global economy, supply chain, investment, and banking. This brought with it not only the potential for national prosperity, but a sense among the people of Myanmar that positive opportunities, long denied to them, could follow. Going back to isolation will bring economic and political pains the people do not deserve. Mr. President, the Secretary General has called on Myanmar's military and police to ensure the right of peaceful assembly is fully respected and demonstrators are not subjected to reprisals. According to the NGO Assistance Association for Political Prisoners, around 700 individuals have been detained, mainly arbitrarily and without charges, trials, and legal representation, and families are not able to locate or contact them. Equally concerning are the restrictions on internet and communication services. They must not be disrupted to ensure the right to freedom of expression, which includes access to information. Ongoing violence, intimidation, and harassment by security personnel, and deliberate acts to create insecurity and instability, as well as the enactment of draconian laws which deprive people of their basic human rights, are egregious. Some of them are also in violation of their own constitution. We should not forget that most of the civil servants hired by the NLD government are still in office. Many have been intimidated and harassed, forced to change sides. This also affects Myanmar's embassies around the world. The ethnic armed groups, who are signatories to the historic 2015 nationwide ceasefire agreement, collectively announced to suspend dialogue with the military. This is remarkable and reflects the major setbacks the current situation has created. The military's decision to release around 23,000 prisoners, among them those associated with political murders and divisive figures who have incited communal tension, is regretful. Weaponizing such individuals to cause unrest and fear is gross betrayal to the people the military has sworn to protect. No leader with the greater national interest genuinely in mind would create this level of chaos during a pandemic which requires an effective inclusive response. An important opportunity to build unity across the country in the fight against COVID-19 has been lost, and is a great danger for the people in Myanmar, but also for the region. Mr. President, let me give some remarks on human rights of Rohingya Muslims and other minorities. The United Nations system will continue to stand with the people of Myanmar, and I appreciate the Security Council's call for safe and ineptid humanitarian access to all people in need. Humanitarian need in Myanmar remains acute, with more than 1 million people in need, with many of those living in areas currently or previously subject to conflict with the military. For the 126,000 Rohingya who remain confined in IDP camps in Rakhine, there must be genuine progress to provide them freedom of movement and durable solution to return to their homes. We must act, and we must ask: how can we rely on a military regime when the very same led the security operations leading to the human rights violations and forced displacement of Rohingya people and others from their homes? In my discussions with the military leadership after the attempted coup, I was given assurances that efforts initiated by the NLD government towards creative conducive conditions for the dignified voluntary safe and sustainable repatriation of the Rohingya refugees to their place of origin or choice would continue. However, recent reports state that the military will launch investigations into the work of Advisory Commission on Rakhine State initiated by Kofi Annan and take action against those who acted. I quote "in the self-interest of an individual without taking national interests into consideration", end of quote. This is deeply concerning. The same has been announced for the activities of the Independent Commission of Inquiry, ICOE. So all who worked to protect Rohingyas and were in favor of accountability are now under threat. We must be clear: accountability for previous and current crimes will not go unpunished. Mr. President, we have a collective responsibility. In my discussions with the military leadership, including several calls with the deputy commander-in-chief, I have echoed these concerns, amplified the Secretary General's advocacy, and requested to visit Myanmar under the condition I can meet with detained government leaders. My intention was to convey directly the concerns of the international community and help resolve differences through peaceful dialogue, with the aim of upholding the will of the Myanmar people. Regrettably, the current regime has so far asked me to postpone any visit. It seems they want to continue making large-scale arrests and have been forcing people to testify against the NLD government. This is cruel and inhuman. It is true: my unique access to key stakeholders in Myanmar, including civilian and military leaders, has allowed me to rely directly on international concerns, if hope to affect communities and CSO leaders through continued dialogue. My visit was also intended to assess the situation directly. For this reason, I had hoped to keep channels open, face those responsible for the current situation, and build an existing relations to persuade a reversal of this crisis. As I have in the past, I hoped to channel many of the shared concerns and messages, based on my regular consultations with many of you. If the regime is not giving access or accepting UN visits needed for these purposes, influential member states could play an important role and support efforts to undertake objective assessments. Member states dadded today have a collective responsibility towards the people of Myanmar and safeguard their democratic aspirations. I reiterate the Secretary General's call for member states to exercise influence regarding the protection of human rights and fundamental freedom of the people of Myanmar. I have been in close contact with a range of stakeholders, including in the region, and appreciate their various efforts and continued support for my role and mandate. The Security Council's 4th February statement was an important first step, but our solidarity with the people of Myanmar requires more action. I seek to continue my role as a bridge in close continued consultations with elected NLD representatives and help facilitate their dialogue with the military as appropriate. Clearly, regional engagements is needed on all fronts, and I will remain closely engaged, including with ASEAN leaders, reinforcing the Secretary General's support to regional efforts. Mr. President, let me conclude. The situation in Myanmar is extremely fragile and fluid. Observing the huge protests in the country and listening to the people, I must say it is... is not about the fight between NLD and Tamadoud Army, it is a people's fight without arms. If there is any escalation in terms of military crackdown, and sadly, as we have seen this before in Myanmar, against people exercising their basic rights, let us act swiftly and collectively. We can no longer afford profound divisions. In closing, I would like to highlight that the Secretary General has demonstrated early leadership in previous weeks, as he did in his letter addressed to the Security Council on the 2nd September 2017, urging concerted efforts to prevent further escalation of the crisis in Rakhine. If the numerous discussions here at the General Assembly and in the Security Council continue to fall short of a forceful and timely response, perhaps existing structures are indeed in need of reforms in keeping with the times. I call on all states to take side for the people of Myanmar, to take side for democracy and human rights. May you, as member states, uphold your responsibilities. Thank you.
Thank you Ambassador Burgen. I now open the floor for a first round of comments and questions. As mentioned earlier, there is no established list of speakers. Delegations wishing to take the floor are invited to press the microphone button. Delegations speaking on behalf of groups are invited to approach the list of speakers, table, and will be given priority. In order to hear as many speakers as possible within limited time available for this meeting, may I request delegations to make their interventions concise and not longer than five minutes for delegations speaking on behalf of a group of states and three minutes for statements by individual member states. I thank you for your cooperation. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Myanmar.
Thank you, Mr. President. And thank you, Mr. President, for your opening remarks. I also thank Special Envoy Miss Christine Wagner for her comprehensive briefing and her continued support towards Myanmar. First and foremost, I would like to reaffirm that I am representing the NLD-led civilian government elected by the people of Myanmar. Right after the military coup, the committee representing Pirongzul Lotor, CRPH, was formed with members of parliament democratically elected by the people of Myanmar at the recently held Free and Fair General Elections. In this regard, Mr. President, I am pleased to deliver the message of the CRPH at this August body. I quote, "Mr. President, excellencies and distinguished delegates, the committee representing Pirongzul Lotor, CRPH, is the legitimate and duly-elected government of Myanmar and must be recognized by the international community as such. The CRPH represents 380 members of parliament elected in general election, held on 8th November 2020. Thus, the members of CRPH are mandated by the people of Myanmar to represent the democratic will of the people and carry out the duties in accordance with the Constitution of the Republic of the Union of Myanmar. On 1st February 2021, the Commander-in-Chief of the military and justly seized the sovereign power of the state by staging the coup d'etat in contravention of the 2008 Constitution. The people of Myanmar from all walks of life are unanimously opposing such unlawful actions of the military. All actions taken by the military in violation of the 2008 Constitution to remove the democratically-elected government by force and State Administration Council emerged from such unlawful actions are deemed unconstitutional. Therefore, the illegal and unconstitutional military coup does not revoke the legitimate authority entrusted upon the CRPH by the people of Myanmar. Both the United Nations Charter and Universal Declaration for Human Rights recognize the self-determination and democratic form of government. In this regard, the legitimacy of CRPH is in line with the international laws and norms. Over the decades, the military ruthlessly deployed brutal techniques to oppress the people from all walks of life in Myanmar. Especially, the military used unspeakable violent methods such as forecast strategies to attack the ethnic minorities in the border areas, and these actions no doubt amount to war crime and crimes against humanity. At the same time, the military never refrains from using violence against the people who are protesting the illegitimate military regime on the streets. Both people of Myanmar and the international family have repeatedly witnessed these brutal actions in 1988, 1996, 2007. The violence committed by the military against the people of Myanmar continues and stays today. However, the military enjoys impunity and cannot stay be held into account. The Myanmar military overthrows a democratically-elected government, shoots to kill the peaceful protesters on the streets, commit crimes targeting civilians, attacks the ambulance and health workers, arrests the democratically-elected parliamentarians using unjust laws, issue arrest warrants without any legal basics and breaches the fundamental human rights of the people of Myanmar. Not only do those actions endanger Myanmar and its people, both in physical and psychological forms, they also seriously pose threats towards regional security and prosperity of the international community. The military can no longer uphold the rule of law and protect the people and the country. Myanmar military has become the existential threat for Myanmar as a polity and civilized society. Now is not the time for the international community to tolerate the war crimes and crimes against humanity committed by Myanmar military. The international community must ensure that coup has no place in the modern world as bound by the UN Secretary General. In that regard, we, the committee representing Pirongzul Lotor, CRPH, duly urge the United Nations, the United Nations Security Council and international community that aspire to build peaceful and civilized global society to use any means necessary to take action against the Myanmar military and to provide safety and security for the people of Myanmar", end quote. Mr. President, as the democracy in Myanmar is at the nascent stage, the Free and Fair General Elections successfully held on 8th November 2020 in Myanmar is indeed a significant milestone in our history. It was said by the people, the people of Myanmar have shown their eagerness and attachment to democracy through their bellots at the elections. They had also demonstrated their desire to build a nation where all the democratic values can flourish, a place where each and every peace-loving individual can play a role in that nation building. The landslide victory of the National League for Democracy at the general elections clearly manifest that the people of Myanmar are solidly united behind State Councilor Doan San Suci to overcome any obstacle in our journey to a peaceful and prosperous society where democratic values will become a norm. Mr. President, completely ignoring the people's desire, the Tamadoud staged a coup on 1st February 2021. That was the day that the parliament, the new parliament supposed to convene its first meeting. The military, detained State Councilor Doan San Suci, President Uwe Mien and other political leaders and civil activists. Since then, people from all strata of life have come out on the streets all over the country and expressed their disappointment with the military coup, as well as demanded the immediate release of all detainees and return of the state power to the people through the elected government. The people of Myanmar are resolute for achieving their demands. I agree with the Secretary General that the military is not acceptable, the coup, the military coup is not acceptable in this modern world and the coup must fail. The people of Myanmar are resilient, perseverance and united in fighting for the end of military coup. Immediate release of all unlawful detainees, return of the state power to the people and restoration of democracy in Myanmar. It is attested to by the ongoing persistent protest throughout the nation since the military coup. It is crystal clear that we all do not want to go back to the system we used to be in before. Here, I wish to recall the words of Doan San Suci said in her inspiring book, Freedom from Fear. I quote, "Within a system which denies the existence of basic human rights, fear tends to be the odor of the day", end quote. Mr. President, at this important juncture, the continued and strong support from the international community is imperative for the people of Myanmar in our fight against the military regime. Taking this opportunity, I would like to thank all countries who have expressed their support towards the people of Myanmar. I also thank the Secretary General, Special Envoy and the Special Reporter of Myanmar for their support. But, the people of Myanmar stay free helpless. Mr. President, excellencies, in addition to the existing support, we need far the strongest possible action from the international community to immediately end the military coup, to stop oppressing the innocent people, to return the state power to the people and to restore the democracy. As such, I would like to appeal all member states and the United Nations as follows. One, issue public statements to strongly condemn the military coup. Two, do not recognize by any means the State Administration Council and the military regime. Three, urge the military regime to respect the result of the Free and Fair 2020 general elections. Four, do not cooperate with the military and take the return of the state power to the people through the elected government. Five, take all stronger possible measures to stop the violent and brutal acts committed by the security forces against peaceful demonstrators and end the military coup immediately. And six, support the CRPH. In conclusion, Mr. President, we will continue to fight for a government which is of the people, by the people, for the people. The people and the NLD-led government will devil our efforts to make the country a democratic fairer union. I wish to request the international community to extend their continued support in this regard. Mr. President, I believe that our fellow Myanmar people inside and outside the country are following this meeting via workers with high interest. Please allow me to speak few words in Myanmar. I thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of Myanmar. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of the European Union.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, for holding this meeting today, for the presentation and intervention that you made. Thank you very much to the Special Envoy for her arduous efforts, for her commitment to the people of Myanmar and for ringing the bells of alarm today and reminding us all of our collective responsibility and not least for those who have special influence over the situation in Myanmar. And a special appreciation to our colleague from Myanmar for this very powerful intervention that he just made on behalf of the democratic forces and all the people of Myanmar. I want to pay tribute to that statement in particular. Mr. President, I have the honor to speak on behalf of the European Union and its member states and the candidate countries Turkey, the Republic of North Macedonia, Montenegro, Serbia and Albania, the country of the stabilization and association process and potential candidate Bosnia and Herzegovina, as well as Ukraine and the Republic of Moldova align themselves with this statement, and so does Monaco and San Marino. Mr. President, the will of the people of Myanmar was clearly expressed at the general election of 8th of November 2020. The results of the election must be respected and any attempt to overturn them by force or by any other means must be rejected. Any allegation of voting irregularities has to be settled within the proper legal and administrative channels. The European Union condemns in the strongest terms the military coup in Myanmar and all violations of human rights and fundamental freedoms. We welcome the strong statements of the Secretary General, including at the opening of the Human Rights Council session on Monday. He called on the Myanmar military to stop the repression immediately. The military coup on 1st of February has pushed Myanmar's democratic transition back several years. We call on the military authorities to immediately end the state of emergency, restore the legitimate civilian government and allow the newly-elected parliament to open with the participation of all elected representatives. We also call for the immediate and unconditional release of President Uwe Mint, State Councilor Doan Doan San Suki, all those sentenced and arbitrarily arrested, those detained for peacefully expressing their views, as well as civilian and political leaders, journalists, human rights activists and other members of civil society. We're deeply concerned about the crackdown on freedom of expression, including through internet blackouts and draconian changes to the law that repress free speech and press. We call on the Myanmar military to guarantee unimpeded telecommunications, freedom of expression online and offline, freedom of association and assembly, as well as access to information. The peaceful demonstrations across the country clearly demonstrate that the people of Myanmar reject the illegal seizure of power by the Myanmar military. The use of violence by the military and police against the peaceful demonstrators is appalling and we offer our condolences to the families of those who have lost their lives. Military authorities and security forces must refrain from all violence against peaceful demonstrators, end the systematic targeting of members of the civil society, including human rights defenders, demonstrators, doctors and journalists, exercise utmost restraint and swiftly bring those responsible for the violence to justice. A culture of impunity has shielded the military and security forces in Myanmar for far too long and that must end. We reiterate our support to the mandate of the independent investigative mechanism for Myanmar to collect evidence and build criminal case files wherever they see indications of serious international crimes or violations of international law. We must also not forget the past grave violations of international law and the ongoing discrimination against ethnic minorities, including the Rohingya, who have long suffered brutal attacks by the military and by non-state actors. The EU is committed to continue providing humanitarian assistance in accordance with the principles of humanity, neutrality, impartiality and independence to those in need, both in Myanmar and across the region, including to the Rohingya. We call upon all parties, including the military authorities, to facilitate free, safe and unhindered access of humanitarian and medical organizations and workers to all people in need. We stand ready to step up our humanitarian assistance. The European Commission just announced 39 million euros of humanitarian aid for affected communities in Bangladesh and in Myanmar. for affected communities in Bangladesh and in Myanmar. We recall that Myanmar must address the root causes of conflict, especially in Rakhine State, and create conditions necessary for the safe, voluntary, sustainable and dignified return of refugees and displaced persons. This also includes ensuring adequate assistance, including health services and education, access to justice to survivors of sexual and gender-based violence. Mr. President, the European Union and its member states strongly support Myanmar's civilian and democratic transition as well as its peace process and national reconciliation and inclusive socio-economic development. We will continue to work with all those willing to support Myanmar's path towards democracy, the rule of law and human rights, including freedom of assembly, association, expression and access to information. We stress the importance of the Security Council's active attention to the situation in Myanmar and we support all initiatives to facilitate dialogue that would lead to de-escalation and a political solution. And we call on the international community and main regional actors and organizations, especially ASEAN, to work towards this end. In this spirit, the EU called together with the UK a special session of the Human Rights Council on February 12, which confirmed the deep concern of the international community about the human rights violations in Myanmar. The EU will also present a resolution at the ongoing 46th session of the Human Rights Council demanding to strengthen the UN mandates in order to ensure the accountability for those responsible for human rights violations. We call on Myanmar to fully implement the provisional measures following the International Court of Justice's order in the case lodged by the Gambia against Myanmar on the application of the Genocide Convention, as is compulsory under international law. The EU also takes note of the International Criminal Court's authorization of the prosecutor to investigate alleged crimes within the court's jurisdiction. We fully support the efforts of the UN Special Envoy Burgner to create space for dialogue and facilitate de-escalation of the crisis. We urge the military authorities to allow you prompt and unimpeded entry into the country and ensure you access to all stakeholders, including President Uwint Mint and Doan San Sutki. The EU is preparing targeted sanctions against those responsible for the coup if efforts for a dialogue solution fail, while avoiding measures which could adversely affect the people of Myanmar, especially the most vulnerable. We will keep all other policy options under review in order to ensure that the legitimate civilian authorities are restored and that Myanmar is brought back onto a path towards democracy. I thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of the European Union. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Sweden on behalf of the group of Nordic countries.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you for calling this meeting on the deeply concerning situation in Myanmar. I also thank you for your statement. I'm delivering this statement on behalf of the Nordic countries, Denmark, Finland, Iceland, Norway and my own country, Sweden. We thank the Special Envoy Burgner for her important and clear briefing and for calling on all of us to take our responsibility. Let me also give our full support to the important and courageous statement by our colleague from Myanmar, representing the elected civilian government in Myanmar. We stand with you and the people of Myanmar in these difficult times. We welcome the unanimous press statement of the Security Council on 4th February. We strongly condemn the military coup and call for the immediate and unconditional release of President Uwint Mint, State Councilor Doan San Sutki and other political leaders, as well as journalists, human rights defenders and peaceful protesters and that have been arbitrarily detained, charged and arrested since February 1st. Last year's general election gave a strong and clear mandate to the National League for Democracy, reflecting the will of the majority to continue the path of democratic reforms. The military leadership must now respect the unequivocal wish of the people of Myanmar. We echo the Secretary General's call on Myanmar's military to immediately stop the repression of civilians, respect human rights and abide by the will of the people. The undemocratic military takeover of government is unacceptable and we are deeply concerned with the human rights situation in Myanmar. It is imperative that those responsible for the most serious international crimes and violations of international law in Myanmar are held accountable. And in this vein, we reiterate our support for the mandate of the independent investigative mechanism for Myanmar. We strongly urge the Commander-in-Chief and the military to refrain from more violence. They must fully respect human rights in accordance with international law, uphold democratic norms and freedoms and fulfill the state's obligation to protect lives. We urge the military to end restrictions and shutdown of internet and other telecom services. We condemn the use of deadly force by the military, especially against young people protesting peacefully in the streets of cities and townships all over Myanmar. Images from all over Myanmar show how grassroots actors, particularly women, continue to step up to demand human rights and peace despite the increased hardship and risk of violence. Youth are also notably at the forefront. The international community must listen to and support these voices that fight for democracy and demand that they are heard. The military coup is placing the peace process with the ethnic armed organization at risk. Recently, the 10 ethnic groups that have signed the nationwide ceasefire agreement issued a powerful joint statement condemning the coup and called for immediate release of the political prisoners, including the reinstatement of State Councilor Doan San Sutki. As a result of the coup, we are deeply concerned that the achievements for national reconciliation and future peace made over the past years will be lost. Mr. President, we call for the military to ensure unrestricted humanitarian access to conflict areas and vulnerable populations, including in Rakhine State, where the humanitarian situation is particularly severe. Furthermore, the authorities in Myanmar have the responsibility to create the conditions on the ground that will make it possible for the Rohingya refugees and other displaced populations to return to Myanmar. We will continue to emphasize the importance of ensuring their safe, voluntary, dignified and sustainable return in accordance with international standards. Mr. President, the Nordic countries continue to work for and support the people of Myanmar on their journey to democratic transition. The illegitimate military takeover has already changed the conditions for the Nordic countries' development assistance in Myanmar and several large development programs have been put on hold. We give our full support also to the international actors and efforts that aim to encourage and find a way for Myanmar to return to the path of democracy. In closing, we want to highlight the importance of the visit of the Special Envoy to Myanmar and strongly urge the military to extend an invitation to her to visit Myanmar as soon as possible and to allow the Special Envoy access to consult with all parties, including the civilian government and the State Council Doan San Sutki. We welcome that the Secretary General continues to make his good offices available to Myanmar. Special Envoy Burgner, please be assured that you have our continued full support. I thank you.
I thank the representative of Sweden. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Saudi Arabia on behalf of the Organization of Islamic Conference.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am honored to deliver this statement on behalf of the 57 members of the Organization of Islamic Cooperation. Distinguished ambassadors, good morning. At the outset, allow me to thank the President of the General Assembly for organizing this timely meeting and for the comprehensive statement you delivered this morning, Mr. President. Moreover, I thank Miss Christine Schreiner Burgner, the Special Envoy on Myanmar, for her comprehensive and clear briefing. And I also pay tribute to our colleague from Myanmar for his courageous statement and strong stand on behalf of the people of Myanmar. Members of the Organization of Islamic Cooperation closely follow the events and current developments in Myanmar. We express our concern on the ongoing tragic events that might impede the process of safe and sustained repatriation of the Rohingya Muslims and we request Myanmar to adhere to international obligations in this regard. Indeed, the current situation in Myanmar has made an already dire situation for Rohingya refugees even worse. Now prospects are even less likely for hundreds of thousands to return promptly and safely to Myanmar from the sprawling camps outside the country and inside the country. We urge the acceleration of the full implementation of the recommendations of the Advisory Commission on Rakhine State and to address the root causes of the crisis as well as other United Nations outcomes, including the verdict issued by the International Court of Justice in the case brought up by the Gambia on behalf of the Organization of Islamic Cooperation. We request Myanmar to uphold its responsibility towards its own people and particularly towards the Rohingya Muslim minority and immediately end all violence and all violations of international law. We also request taking all necessary measures to provide justice to victims and to end impunity for all violations and abuses of international humanitarian law, starting with a full, transparent and independent investigation into reports of all of these violations. In this regard, we call upon Myanmar to cooperate with ongoing international accountability mechanisms and with the Special Envoy and allow her free access to meet with the leaders of Myanmar who have been detained, as well as with the leaders of the Rakhine community, the Rohingya community in the Rakhines. We reiterate further our firm position in support of the Muslim Rohingya people and we call for ensuring their safety and security and recognizing their fundamental rights, including the right to full citizenship and the creation of conditions conducive to the voluntary, safe, dignified and sustainable return of all Rohingya refugees and IDPs. In conclusion, the OIC members welcome the international community's efforts, the United Nations, ASEAN and the government of Bangladesh in finding a solution to the refugee crisis and reiterate their call to Myanmar to guarantee their safe return to their homeland in dignity and peace and grant them their full citizenship rights and to ensure the non-violent handling of the events in Myanmar and protect the safety and well-being of all the people of Myanmar. Thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of Saudi Arabia. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of the United States.
Mr. President, thank you for convening the membership here today and thank you, Madam Special Envoy, for your briefing. It is an honor for me to be addressing the General Assembly for the first time and it is fitting that this is such an important topic. Let me be clear from the outset. The United States continues to strongly condemn the military coup in Myanmar and we condemn the security forces' brutal killing of unarmed people. And I would, like others, like to welcome and commend the courageous and brave statement made by the Myanmar Perm Rep here this morning. Like the Perm Rep, the people of Myanmar are making their voices heard. Doctors and civil servants, grocery store cashiers and milk tea servers, delivery drivers, all-rig operators and artists. They are marching in the streets, they are raising red balloons and banging pots and pans and they are demanding their democracy back. We stand in solidarity with them. We stand with the millions of people in Myanmar who have displayed courage and determination to reject this military coup. We stand with them as they call for a return to peace, democratic governance and rule of law. The military has tried to silence those calls with social media and internet blackouts, but we still hear the people of Myanmar loud and clear. As President Biden said, the United States has and will continue to take actions in close coordination with allies and partners. We will show the military that their actions have consequences. Violence against those exercising their human rights and fundamental freedoms is unacceptable. It is time for the military to immediately relinquish power, refrain from further violence, release all those unjustly detained and restore Myanmar's democratically elected government. And it is time to provide unhindered humanitarian access so that life-saving humanitarian assistance reaches all the people in need. For our part, the United States will continue to provide life-saving humanitarian assistance, including to Rohingya and other vulnerable populations in Chen, Kachin, Rakhine and Shan states. We will also continue working to maintain and improve the health of the people of Myanmar, including combating COVID-19. And we will strengthen the ability of civil society to guard democratic space, support independent media and promote peace and reconciliation. And we ask that together the whole world speaks with one voice and condemn the military's detention of State Councilor Doan San Sutking, President Wen Muyet and hundreds of other civilian officials and human rights defenders. We must all call for their immediate release. We must all condemn attacks on journalists, activists and peaceful protesters. And we must all condemn the military's restrictions on freedom of expression, including freedom to seek, receive and impart information. We urge every member state here today to use any channel available to tell the Myanmar military that violence against the people of Myanmar will not be tolerated. Together, we all show the people of Myanmar that the world is watching. We hear them and we stand with them. Thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of the United States and as it is the first participant to the meeting, I would like to welcome you on behalf of the General Assembly as the representative of the host country. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Bangladesh.
I thank you, Mr. President, and I thank you for convening today's timely meeting and for your statement. I also wish to add my voice to yours to warmly congratulate and welcome our new colleague, the permanent representative of the United States. My delegation aligns itself with the statement, Mr. President, delivered by the permanent representative of Saudi Arabia on behalf of OIC. Allow me to add a few points in our national capacity as an affected country to highlight the Rohingya situation. Let me begin by thanking the Special Envoy for her comprehensive briefing on the current situation in Myanmar. The situation is a matter of grave concern. As an immediate neighbor, we would like to see peace and stability in Myanmar. We hope that the democratic process and constitutional arrangements will be upheld and restored there. It is regrettable that the Special Envoy has not been allowed to visit Myanmar to assess the situation on the ground. We urgently hope that Myanmar would engage with the Office of the Special Envoy, which was established by the UN General Assembly with overwhelming mandate. We would also like to take this opportunity to request the Special Envoy to utilize every opportunity to keep the member states duly apprised of her current activities and future work plan in Myanmar as mandated by the GEA Resolution. Mr. President, Bangladesh has been hosting over a million Myanmar nationals, the Rohingyas, who fled their homes in the face of atrocities and took shelter in Bangladesh in multiple phases. From humanitarian commitments, my Prime Minister opened the border and provided them with much-needed shelter and protection. However, like any other people, the Rohingyas want to return home. They want a safe and stable future in their own country. They want a safe and stable future in their own country. With support from the international community, we have been making every effort for their repatriation in a sustainable and dignified manner. We have been working with the Myanmar government as well under bilateral and other frameworks to begin the repatriation process. We expect these processes to resume and be expedited to achieve a durable solution to this grave human rights and humanitarian crisis. We count on the continued cooperation and support of the international community in this regard. Mr. President, lack of progress in repatriation in the last three years have led to widespread frustration and despair among the Rohingya population in Coxas Bazar. And one manifestation of that is their perilous journey by sea for a bit of future. The current developments are not helping the situation. Further delay in repatriation may exacerbate the situation. Peace and prosperity of the region hinges critically on the success in ensuring sustainable return and reintegration of the displaced persons in their places of origin. We believe that full and effective implementation of the recommendations of the Advisory Commission on Rakhine State, including the establishment of a clear pathway to citizenship of the Rohingyas, would be critical to resolve the lingering Rohingya crisis. Equally important would be to ensure accountability and justice for the massive violations of human rights of the Rohingyas. We earnestly hope that this assembly would remain engaged in finding a comprehensive resolution to this crisis. I thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of Bangladesh. Now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Liechtenstein.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I thank you for organizing this briefing of the special envoy in response to the letter we jointly sent with other member states on the basis of the mandate that this assembly has adopted less than two months ago. At that time, who would have expected such a fast and terrible turn of events? A military coup trampling the rights of the people of Myanmar, disrupting the transition to democratic order, violently oppressing peaceful dissent and serving the narrow interests of a detached and unaccountable military with a decades-long record of violence and mismanagement. The report of the special envoy is extremely concerning and puts the international community to the test. We are grateful for the clear words that the Secretary General himself has found to condemn this coup, demanding an immediate end to the repression. From all corners of the world, those words resonate in similar strong reactions. States from the region and Myanmar's fellow ASEAN members have the most impactful voice, as reflected also in the Security Council's statement. We look at them to stand in support of the people of Myanmar and stability in the region. Mr. President, we must all listen to the loud and clear voice of the people of Myanmar themselves, as we have witnessed earlier today in the courageous statement of our colleague from Myanmar, support their bravery and their resilience against violent oppression and against the attempt to send them back to the dark times. They represent the values that the United Nations is built on and we have a collective responsibility to stand up for them. We call on the authorities to exercise maximum restraint, refrain from further violence, release all political prisoners and to stand down to allow for a process of restoring democracy. At the same time, the international community must ensure that arms transfers into Myanmar are stopped without delay in light of the evident disposition of the authorities to use weapons against civilians in blatant violation of international law. The Security Council has the primary responsibility in this respect. We also call on the authorities to facilitate the visit of the special envoy without further delay. This assembly has a duty to remain zest of the situation, including on the question of arms transfers and to act in light of the situation on the ground and the ability of the Security Council to take effective action itself. Mr. President, this is a political and a security crisis, but its immediate consequences are felt by the people of Myanmar as a violation of their fundamental rights and freedoms, a success of violence by police and military, denial of freedom of expression or association of political participation and of accountability. Some of the same forces responsible for mass atrocities against the Rohingya and other minorities now engage in oppression of peaceful protesters who claim that Myanmar Constitution guarantees to them. The climate of systematic impunity for the gravest crimes committed in Myanmar in recent history has been the breeding ground for more violence, contributing to lowering inhibitions where the deterrence of the full effect of the law would be needed. It is not too late for the Security Council to do the right thing and to refer the situation in Myanmar in its entirety to the International Criminal Court. At the same time, the independent investigative mechanism for Myanmar does important work. International crimes, including crimes against humanity, fall under the mechanisms mandate also if committed today. For those crimes, there is no expiration date. When Myanmar returns to democracy and to the rule of law, as it will, its future can be based on justice. We look forward to the General Assembly following up to the briefing today in short time and with a concrete outcome if needed. The people of Myanmar deserve the full support of the international community in their struggle for freedom. I thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of Liechtenstein. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Brunei Darussalam.
Thank you, Mr. President, for giving me the floor. I appreciate the convening of this informal meeting and welcome the briefing by Ms. Christian Burgner, the special envoy of the Secretary General on the situation in Myanmar. Brunei Darussalam is closely following the developments in Myanmar and reaffirms that the political stability in all ASEAN member states is essential to achieving a peaceful, stable and prosperous ASEAN community. In this regard, we would like to refer to the ASEAN's Chairman's statement on the development in the Republic of the Union of Myanmar that was issued on the 1st of February, where we recall the purpose and principle enshrined in the ASEAN Charter, including the adherence to the principles of democracy, the rule of law and good governance, respect for and protection of human rights and fundamental freedom, which we are also consistent, which are also consistent with the UN Charter. We encourage the pursuit of dialogue and reconciliation to ensure the return to normalcy in accordance with the will and interests of the people of Myanmar. As Chair of ASEAN, Brunei Darussalam stands ready to work both towards a positive and peaceful outcome. Mr. President, we appreciate the work of the Secretary General of ASEAN in leading the implementation of the recommendation of the preliminary needs assessment. Look forward to the conduct of the comprehensive needs assessment and encourage the Secretary General of ASEAN to continue identifying possible areas to effectively facilitate the repatriation process. Therefore, we also support efforts in ensuring that the framework for cooperation as agreed by Myanmar, the Office of the United Nations High Commissioner for Refugees and the United Nations Development Program. I thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of the Brunei Darussalam. Now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Turkey.
President. Mr. President, I thank you for convening this important and timely meeting and for your comprehensive statement. I would also like to thank Special Envoy Ms. Burgner for her briefing. I also wish to pay tribute to our colleague from Myanmar and commend him for his valiant speech and principled position. Mr. President, we are deeply concerned and strongly condemn the coup data that took place in Myanmar on the 1st of February. Let us be clear. Any step to undermine the civilian rule is unacceptable. Any effort to challenge the democratic processes is illegitimate. There is no alternative to elected government which represent the will of the people. Make no mistake, military interventions do not bring stability, security or prosperity. Military interventions result in suffering of the people. Military rule means systematic violation of human rights. Military takeover is the cause of more major socio-economic problems all over the world. Today, the international community must be united to give a strong and clear message. Military uniforms have no place in politics. Democracy is the only legitimate form of governance and democratic processes must be respected. Mr. President, we call on military authorities in Myanmar to immediately release all elected officials, politicians and other detained civilians. All restrictions placed on the elected leaders and democratic institutions must be removed. The elections that took place on 8th November 2020 was hailed by the international community as open and fair. We call for the convening of the new parliament that was formed through the free will of the Myanmar people after the elections and restoration of the democratically elected government as soon as possible. We are also deeply concerned about the prospects of escalation of the crisis by violent suppression of protests following the Declaration of Martial Law. The military must show restraint and respect people's right to assemble peacefully and express their opinions. Turkey will continue to closely monitor the human rights situation in Myanmar through the UN mechanisms. We were among the countries that supported convening of the special session of the Human Rights Council on Myanmar on 12th February. We have also co-sponsored the resolution adopted by consensus at that session. Mr. President, the military intervention also risks worsening the already dire humanitarian situation and the vulnerability of refugees and internally displaced persons. I would like particularly underline the ongoing plight of Rohingya Muslims in the country. We urge the Myanmar military to ensure free and unhindered humanitarian access to all conflict-affected areas and vulnerable communities. We are seriously concerned that the current developments also reduce the prospects for the voluntary, safe and dignified return of Rohingya refugees. We expect Myanmar military to continue working with UN institutions towards creating conducive conditions for their return. We call on military authorities to fully implement the recommendations of Rakhine Advisory Commission and the Independent Commission of Inquiry to address the root causes of conflict and to ensure accountability for serious human rights violations in the country. We urge Myanmar to fully comply with the provisional measures ordered by the International Court of Justice in January 2020, as the first international court ruling against Myanmar since the atrocities have started. It's a strong ruling and has given hope to Rohingya Muslims around the world. We commend the remarkable and exemplary work of Gambia, who demonstrated the importance of human rights and dignity and has made it a national priority to fight for the Rohingya. Lastly, let me extend our support to the Secretary General's call to urgently allow the special envoy to visit Myanmar and assess the situation firsthand. Turkey will continue to follow the situation in Myanmar and to encourage the authorities to return to the democratic path as soon as possible. Thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Turkey. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Indonesia.
Thank you, Mr. President, for convening this important meeting and I would also like to thank Madam Special Envoy for her briefing. Indonesia appreciates and rendered her full support to the works of the special envoy. To date, Minister Marsudi of Indonesia has maintained intensive communications and engagement with Madam Special Envoy. And just yesterday, Foreign Minister Marsudi also communicated with the UN Secretary General to discuss efforts to address the issue in Myanmar. The Secretary General expressed appreciation for Indonesia's tireless efforts to find solutions for the issue at hand. Excellencies, since the very beginning, Indonesia has expressed deep concerns on the recent development in Myanmar. All of us should play its role in addressing the issue. For Indonesia, we wish to emphasize three principal positions to address the issue in Myanmar. First, the safety, well-being and protection of all the people in Myanmar is the number one priority. We continue to urge all parties to exercise utmost restraint and to refrain from any violence or use of force to avoid any casualties and bloodshed. Second, the only option is restoring democracy back on its track in accordance with the wishes of the people of Myanmar. Third, as Myanmar is a member of ASEAN, it is vital to uphold the principles of ASEAN Charter, particularly adherence to the rule of law, good governance, the principle of democracy and constitutional government as well as respect for fundamental freedoms and human rights. Indonesia believes that regional mechanism, in this case ASEAN, should be fully utilized to address this issue. In this regard, the international community must work in synergy with ASEAN and provide space for ASEAN to find solution in Myanmar. On our part, our president has underlined the importance for ASEAN to meet and discuss the issue. He also instructed Foreign Minister Marsudi to consult with ASEAN Chair as well as other ASEAN foreign ministers. Since then, Foreign Minister Marsudi has intensified communications and consultation with other ASEAN foreign ministers, among others through the subtle diplomacy. Indonesia believes that continued communications and consultation is a primary tool to express concerns, convey hopes and find solutions to put democracy back on track. Indonesia remains highly committed to contribute toward efforts to promote peace, stability and prosperity in the region. In closing, Mr. President, the current situation in Myanmar should not distract us from creating conditions necessary for the voluntary, safe, dignified and sustainable return of displaced Rohingya and other minorities. For far too long, the people of Rohingya have suffered. Thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of Indonesia. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Japan.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. I would like to start by thanking the special envoy of the Secretary General, Ms. Christine Burgner, for her briefing. Japan comments her tireless work to engage Myanmar and cooperate with the member states, especially in the region. And I would also like to highly commend the courageous message deliberate by her colleague, P R Myanmar Key. We stand by the people of Myanmar. Japan has grave concerns over the situation caused by the military coup in Myanmar. Japan has consistently and strongly supported the process of democratization in Myanmar and therefore, we cannot help but feel deep disappointment and sadness. Japan opposes any action which goes against the democratization process and we strongly urge the Myanmar military to release those who are detained, including State Counselor Ado Anssu-Sansuchi, and to swiftly restore Myanmar's democratic political system. Japan is also seriously concerned about the rising tensions on the ground. In particular, Japan strongly condemns the shooting of protesters by the Myanmar's security apparatus and we would like to offer our condolences to the bereaved and expressive heartfelt sympathies to the injured. Japan strongly urges the security apparatus to immediately halt the use of force against the public. Using lethal forces against peaceful protesters can never be tolerated. Furthermore, Japan is concerned about the negative impact of the current political and social unrest on people's lives, especially given the human security crisis caused by the COVID-19. We urge the Myanmar authorities to provide necessary protection for those people in need and secure access to the UN and other organizations engaged in humanitarian activities in the field. Lastly, while we should bear in mind the circumstances in Myanmar as we aim to address these concerns, the utmost priority should go to ensuring freedom from fear, freedom from want and freedom to live in dignity to people in Myanmar. They are the ones to play the leading part in building a society where they can enjoy all their rights and fully develop their potential. Japan will continue to be engaged in this endeavor. Thank you very much.
I thank the distinguished representative of Japan. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Albania.
Thank you, Mr. President, for convening this important meeting. Many thanks also to the special envoy for her briefing on Myanmar. I'd also like to salute the courageous statement of the Permanent Representative of Myanmar today. Albania has joined the statement delivered by the EU and I wish to add the following remarks in my national capacity. Albania joins the international community in strongly condemning the military coup in Myanmar carried out on February 1st and all violations of human rights and fundamental freedoms. Albania also firmly condemns the violent repression of the military authorities and security forces against peaceful unarmed protesters. Mr. President, the military coup in Myanmar is threatening to undo years of efforts to strengthen the democratic institutions in the country. The attempt to seize power and forcibly overturn the will of the people expressed at the elections of 8th November 2020 is illegal and unacceptable. Albania calls on the military authorities to end the state of emergency and restore the legitimate civilian government. We also call for the immediate and unconditional release of President Wu Yin Mint, State Councilor Ang San Suci and all this sentenced and arbitrarily arrested for peacefully expressing their views. Albania supports the mandate of UN Special Envoy to engage in dialogue in an attempt to de-escalate the crisis. We urge the military authorities to allow her entry into the country and ensure her access to all stakeholders. Mr. President, while the attention of the international community is currently focused on the grave political situation in Myanmar, it is important also to not lose sight of the dire situation of the Rohingya Muslim minority, which has become even worse now following the military coup but also the surge of COVID-19 pandemic. Albania urges the Myanmar authorities to address the root causes of the crisis in Rakhine State and to create the necessary conditions for the voluntary, safe and sustainable return to their homeland of hundreds of thousands of Rohingya refugees. In concluding, I'd like to emphasize that Albania, together with the international community, stands with the people of Myanmar and supports their aspirations for a return to democratic governance and rule of law. The world is watching. Thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Albania. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of the United Kingdom.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to join others in thanking the special envoy for her briefing today and also pay tribute to the powerful statement of my colleague, the Permanent Representative of Myanmar. The United Kingdom condemns the military coup in Myanmar and the arbitrary detention of members of the democratically elected civilian government, including State Councilor Ang Sang Su Chi and President Wu Yin Mint and civil society. We call for those arbitrarily detained to be immediately and unconditionally released. We need assurances of their safety and well-being. We stand with the people of Myanmar, who are now bravely exercising their democratic right to protest this coup. Their wishes and the result of the November 2020 general election must be respected. The situation in Myanmar continues to deteriorate. Peaceful protests are suppressed, peaceful exercise of freedoms inhibited by restrictions. Three protesters have died. We call on the military and the police to exercise utmost restraint and respect human rights and international law. Firing live ammunition on unarmed protesters must stop. Three weeks have passed since Security Council members issued a robust unified statement. Today's General Assembly discussion represents the grave concern of the whole international community for the people of Myanmar and for the country's peaceful and democratic future. Mr. President, I wish to make three points. First, the international community and the United Nations has a vital role to play. We express our strong support for the continued efforts of the special envoy on Myanmar to secure a peaceful return of Myanmar to its path towards democracy. We call on the military authorities urgently to allow the special envoy to visit Myanmar and assess the situation firsthand. Regional partners in particular have a critical role to play and it's important that the UN engages with the Association of Southeast Asian Nations and others in progressing any solution. We welcome the ASEAN Chair's statement of the 1st of February and ASEAN's ongoing efforts. Second, the military should face the consequences of their actions. As such, the United Kingdom has sanctioned nineteen individuals in the upper echelons of the Tatmadore, each responsible for serious human rights violations. We urge others urgently to explore the possibility of sanctions to deter further atrocities and encourage the reinstatement of democracy. The UK has also conducted a review of our aid to Myanmar to ensure that money does not support the military. We're also encouraging UK businesses to ensure that they're not engaging with military-owned enterprises. We encourage others to do the same. Third, it is vital that we do not forget the most vulnerable in Myanmar. Hundreds of thousands of Rohingya and other minorities continue to suffer as they remain confined to their villages and IDP camps across the country. Notwithstanding the deterioration of the security situation in Myanmar since the coup, the international community and the UN should continue to encourage Myanmar to work towards creating conducive conditions for the voluntary, safe, dignified and sustainable return of Rohingya refugees from Bangladesh in consultation with them. Additionally, displaced and vulnerable communities in Myanmar, including the Rohingya as well as vulnerable host communities, should continue to receive humanitarian assistance. In this context, humanitarian agencies should have free and unhindered access to these communities. Mr. President, I would like to conclude by reading an extract of a letter from the committee representing Bidhansu Luthdoor, which represents the views of three hundred and eighty democratically elected MPs. It reads: "Now is not the time for the international community to tolerate the actions committed by the military. We urge the United Nations and international community to support Myanmar's democracy and its people." I thank the special envoy again for her excellent briefing and continued hard work. Thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of the United Kingdom. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Switzerland.
Mr. President, let me start by thanking the UN Special Envoy, the Secretary General, Her Excellency Christine Schraner for her comprehensive briefing and her readiness to be with us today. It is crucial to exchange about the situation, the current situation in Myanmar and we would like to thank you for organizing that briefing. And I would also like to thank the representative of Myanmar, our colleague, for his very courageous statement. Switzerland is gravely concerned by the situation in Myanmar and we condemn the taking of power by the Burmese army. My country opposes all attempts of alteration of the results of the general elections of 8th November 2020. Switzerland asks for the immediate release of President Wu Yin Mint and Her Excellency Ang Chang Shuky as much as all persons who have been arrested. My country has actively supported the democratic transition. We ask for an immediate restart of dialogue and democratic process towards more freedom, sustainable peace, respect for human rights and the development of the country. Switzerland stands ready to support all efforts for dialogue and reconciliation. We ask the military authorities to respect international law, in particular international humanitarian law and human rights and we strongly ask to refrain from all acts of violence against the population, in particular against peaceful protesters. We request the military authorities to respect all fundamental rights, in particular freedom to assembly, to express opinions and exchange information and we expect that they guarantee complete and immediate access to the internet. It is crucial that humanitarian organizations have access to the entire country and it is crucial that the Rohingya refugees can return on the basis of international standards. Switzerland asks for accountability for all violations of international law. They have to be investigated by a credible, transparent and independent impartial investigation. All efforts have to be strengthened and we asked also the authorities to collaborate with the independent mechanism of investigation. And allow me also to underline our strong support for our special envoy of the Secretary General from Myanmar and her important work in this country. My country appreciates that the special envoy has good relation and trust with all different parties concerned in Myanmar but also beyond the borders. Her relations are the basis of dialogue to find peaceful solutions for this crisis and we therefore ask the military authorities to invite her to Myanmar as soon as possible and to make it possible that she can meet also Commander-in-Chief General Min Aung Heng and Her Excellency Ang Chang Shuky. And let me finish by a quote of our special envoy. I quote, "It's a people's fight without arms," unquote. So, dear colleagues, let's stand by the people. I thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Switzerland and now I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Vietnam.
Thank you, Madam President. We join the other to thank the special envoy for her briefing today and we appreciate her efforts in maintaining dialogue and exchanges with concerned party in Myanmar and encourage her further engagement in such a thoughtful manner. Madam President, the ongoing complicated development in Myanmar are detrimental to stability, development and the legitimate interest of the Amamant people. We call on concerned party to exercise restraint, refrain from action that would increase tension, conduct dialogue towards a satisfactory solution in accordance with the constitution and the law of Myanmar and with the will and aspiration of its people, thus creating a favorable condition for the smooth democratic process and ensuring the safety and security for Myanmar people, unimpeded access for humanitarian relief and essential service for Myanmar people. We hope stability will soon return to the country for its own development and for peace, stability in the region. The international community should make efforts to support and facilitate the smooth democratic transition process in Myanmar while respecting the principle of national independence, sovereignty and non-interference in internal affairs. In this regard, we support the special envoy for good offices and encourage a coordination between the special envoy and ASEAN amid involving all relevant stakeholders to stabilize the situation. ASEAN continues its support for Myanmar efforts to bring peace, stability and uphold the rule of law, promote harmony and reconciliation among the various community as well as ensure the sustainable and equitable development in Myanmar. And recently ASEAN Chair Seuss a chair statement regarding the purpose and principles of ASEAN Charter, reiterating also the political stability in ASEAN member state is essential to achieving a peaceful, stable and progress of ASEAN community and encouraging the per- the perceiving of dialogue, reconciliation and the return to normalcy in accordance with the will and interest of the people of Myanmar. In addition, as mentioned by our ASEAN colleague earlier, ASEAN has been making efforts to hold an informal ASEAN ministerial meeting on this matter very soon and we call on international community to support ASEAN effort in this endeavor. Madam President, the ongoing situation in Myanmar is being closely followed by the international community and we recognize both bilateral and multilateral efforts have been met with a view to bringing stability to the country. All approaches should mutually reinforce one another and we must keep working together particularly to reduce the ricks of violence. Any measure should be preceded by a carefully review and evaluation of potential consequences, especially at a time when millions of people in Myanmar are suffering from the economic fallout and the COVID-19 pandemic. Constructive dialogue, cooperation and- ...of the Myanmar people and for peace and stability in the region. I thank you very much.
I thank the distinguished representative of Vietnam and now I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Costa Rica, followed by Canada and Singapore.
Thank you and greetings. I am talking about the comments by President Volkan Boskier. It's a beautiful country, Myanmar, and its population still more, which is noble and in great abnegation as we have seen and heard this morning in the courageous speech by the permanent representative of Myanmar. It is a people who deserves to live in peace without repression. Costa Rica expresses gratitude for the prompt convening of this informal debate and the presentation of the briefing by the special envoy. Costa Rica deeply deplores the breakdown in democratic institutionality in Myanmar. We condemn and repudiate the coup against a democratically elected government and the acts of the military junta against the civilian population and Myanmar leaders. We align ourselves with the statement a few days ago by the Secretary General and a number of previous speakers today in that coups of this kind do not belong to our times. Three crises have come concurrently which could have devastating effects for this country and region. The first is the humanitarian crisis amongst the Rohingya population which remains unresolved with hundreds of thousands of people detained, displaced, stateless or living in the most precarious conditions, as denounced this morning as well by the permanent representative of Bangladesh. The second is a political crisis resulting from a military coup whose outcome can only be a reversal of the yearned for openness, rational reconciliation, liberty, sustainable development and peace. For Costa Rica, all efforts made in Myanmar to re-establish the rule of law and institutional na- naity and the legal order, any such effort must be supported so that the people can live without fear and fully enjoy their rights. Allow me to underscore three specific actions. Costa Rica calls for an immediate cessation of any action seeking to restrict, detain, judge, stigmatize or silence the people of Myanmar. Costa Rica calls for a restriction of any action which would hamper freedom of association, assembly and expression, both in public, the public space and the digital space, including a respect for the right to development and access to education. Costa Rica also vehemently calls for the rights of civil society and activists and political leaders who have been detained arbitrarily without due process, legal representation or medical assistance. Costa Rica believes that the situation currently afflicting the people of Myanmar urgently requires- requires solidarity from all countries, including the granting of temporary asylum and assistance to refugees or asylum seekers. A failure to do this could result in these refugees being subject to very delicate situations such as arrest, detention, or deportation. If we do this, however, it will be in line with the principles of solidarity and cooperation between nations. Thirdly, Costa Rica calls upon weapon exporting countries to halt immediately and with no further statements or conditions, the sales or transfer of weapons, ammunition, and ammunition to Myanmar. And I would add, all countries who require these resources. In Myanmar, there is a real danger and risk, and we have evidence of this in what's been said this morning, a real risk that such weapons could be used to commit serious violations of human rights and international humanitarian law, including possible war crimes. An unarmed nation such as Costa Rica deplores the fact that significant economic resources have been invested in the armed forces over the years and have become a catalyst for conflict and a barrier to peace and development. Costa Rica launches an urgent call for honoring Article 26 of the Charter and also Articles VI and VII of the Arms Trade Treaty. Investing in human safety, in the well-being of people, and not investing in weapons is the first step down the difficult path to lasting peace in Myanmar and across the world. President, with regard to the reform process and democratic transition, allow me to finish by acknowledging the determined commitment of Myanmar youth to democracy. They, youth of Myanmar, is a new generation who are key in promoting inclusion, gender equality, respect for diversity and prosperity, and enjoyment of all human rights for all people. The international community must unite to protect the people and the young people of this country because they are the key to a future of democracy, justice, and enduring peace in this beautiful country. Thank you very much.
I think the distinguished representative of Costa Rica, and now I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Canada.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. It's a great privilege to be here in the room today. I must say, it's been said that the greatest of all virtues is courage, because it's courage that allows all the other virtues to happen. And I feel very strongly that we were in the room today in such a moment where one of us had the courage to tell the truth directly about what was happening in his country. He did so with much dignity, and I salute him. I salute the ambassador for Myanmar for the courage and dignity that he has shown throughout the last several weeks. And he has asked us to stand with the people of Myanmar, and I can assure him that Canada stands with the people of Myanmar, all the people of Myanmar. And we also stand with him, because I think we all understand what it took for him to give the talk that he gave today. I also want to thank the special envoy for her briefing. We're extremely supportive of her mandate in Myanmar, and having served as special envoy for my own country involving the Rohingya crisis and having had several meetings with Ambassador Burgenner, I think it must be said that her work is more important now than ever before, and we shall support her work in any way that we can. And once again, we call on the authorities in Myanmar to meet with her, and we ask that she be allowed to meet with Aung San Suu Kyi and with the president, both of whom are in detention, and to be able to do her work.
Now nearly one month since the military seizure of power, the international community has seen the enduring courage that I mentioned earlier, resilience, and determination of the Myanmar people. Across the country, tens of thousands of peaceful protesters remain resolute in their demands for a return to democracy and civilian government.
... horrific scenes of violence carried out by the army against a group of citizens in their hundreds of thousands, indeed millions, who do not have arms, or guns, or weapons, or bazookas, or tanks, who have nothing but pots and pans and their own courage and determination to stand for freedom. We are appalled by the number of people who've been arrested, and of course, our hearts go out to the families of those who have been killed. And we need to understand that what is happening in Myanmar is not just the action of one political party, as the special envoy very rightly pointed out, it's representatives of all the people in all of their variety, in all of their backgrounds, but with all of their determination to insist that the democratic will of the people expressed in an election, which was widely observed and widely assessed. Canada has taken issue with some of these steps that have been taken by the government of Myanmar, by Aung San Suu Kyi. We have taken issue with the things that have not been done, when we speak particularly of the ongoing crisis of the Rohingya refugees and the need to finally come to grips with the full diversity of the country in accepting the need for constitutional change and for what the ambassador today referred to as the creation of a federal union. But we recognize that Aung San Suu Kyi was not only elected for the first time, she was re-elected, and she was re-elected with even greater support than she had in the previous election. And our firm belief is that she is the leader of her people, and she should be allowed to take her place as the leader of her country and to carry on with the process of constitutional reform, which the army has refused to accept because its implication would clearly be, as my colleague from Turkey so clearly expressed today in his discussion about the meaning of a military coup, the meaning would be the acceptance by the military of the fact that the government by the people, of the people, for the people, has to be a government that is civilian-led, to which the military has to accept its place and responsibility. So, Mr. Madam President, we stand with our international partners. We stand with all those who've spoken today in condemning this coup, calling for the immediate and unconditional release of all those who've been arbitrarily detained, including the president and the state councillor, and for the restoration of democracy.
It is very important, President, for the will of Myanmar's people to be respected. The campaign of repression and intimidation by the army must come to an end, and those responsible must be held to account. We have, in coordination with international partners, levied sanctions against the military leadership, and we are considering further measures should the Tatmadore refuse to reverse their course. We continue, of course, to call for full humanitarian access to support the most vulnerable, including the Rohingya.
People of Myanmar prevail, and may peace prevail, but may justice also prevail. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Ambassador, for your powerful remarks. Dear colleagues, I would like to inform you that we have twenty speakers remaining on the list. Therefore, I would like to request delegations to make their interventions concise and not longer than three minutes. I thank you for your cooperation. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Singapore, to be followed by Qatar and Malaysia.
Thank you, Madam President. We want to thank the President of the General Assembly for convening this meeting, which lets us hear directly from the special envoy of the Secretary-General on recent developments in Myanmar. Madam President, Singapore is gravely concerned by the alarming developments in Myanmar. The use of lethal weapons against unarmed civilians under any circumstances is inexcusable. We urge the authorities to exercise utmost restraint, to avoid further injuries and loss of life, and to take urgent steps to de-escalate the situation. We hope that there will be a peaceful resolution and national reconciliation in Myanmar. In this respect, Singapore hopes that President Nguyen Min, State Councillor Aung San Suu Kyi, and the other detainees will be released so that they can engage in discussions and negotiations in good faith. The stakeholders in Myanmar must find a long-term, peaceful political solution, including a return to its path of democratic transition. If the situation continues to escalate, there will be serious consequences for Myanmar and indeed for our region. Singapore has always upheld the principle that the future of Myanmar has to be determined by her own people. We have supported Myanmar's difficult democratic transition thus far and will continue to do so. Singapore reiterates its support for the statement issued by the ASEAN Chair on the first of February 2021, which reaffirmed the importance of the principles enshrined in the ASEAN Charter, including adherence to the principles of democracy, the rule of law, good governance, as well as respect for and protection of human rights and fundamental freedoms. It also called for dialogue, reconciliation, and the return to normalcy in accordance with the will of the people of Myanmar. Singapore believes that ASEAN can play a discreet constructive role in facilitating a return to normalcy and stability in Myanmar. Singapore also extends our full support to the continued efforts of the UN Secretary-General, Special Envoy in Myanmar, Christine Ashwara Borgana, who has made important inroads in the past three years in her engagement with the key stakeholders in Myanmar. Special Envoy Borgana plays a unique and crucial role given her access to the parties involved. We hope that she will be able to visit Myanmar as soon as possible to meet all the key stakeholders. It is important for the special envoy to have a firsthand assessment of the situation on the ground, and we call on all parties to extend their support and cooperation to her. I thank you, Madam President.
I think the distinguished representative of Singapore, and now I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Qatar.
Thank you, Madam President. We thank and appreciate the convening of this important meeting, and we also thank Ms. Christine Burgenner, the special envoy on Myanmar, for her comprehensive briefing. We align ourselves with the statement delivered by the permanent representative of the Kingdom of Saudi Arabia on behalf of the OIC. Madam President, the State of Qatar closely monitors the situation and latest development in Myanmar. We express our concern that such unrest would lead to destabilizing the situation, and they will have negative repercussions on the respect of human rights and fundamental freedoms. Especially, the State of Qatar is concerned that such events would lead to further violations of human rights, especially against the Rohingya Muslims in the Rakhine State. Therefore, we reiterate the need to respect international law, international humanitarian law, and international human rights law, and to conduct independent investigations into all violations and to hold perpetrators accountable. It's important to take that the Myanmar authorities take necessary measures to protect all minorities, including Rohingya Muslims, and to ensure that they enjoy all their legitimate rights, and also to facilitate their safe, voluntary, and dignified return to their homes and regions, and to ensure unfettered humanitarian access, and to pursue comprehensive development. This would lead to national reconciliation and stability. In closing, Madam President, the State of Qatar reiterates that it will continue to support the efforts of the international community and all stakeholders to resolve differences through political dialogue in Myanmar, and we call on all parties in Myanmar to pursue national dialogue in order to reach a peaceful solution to the crisis in the country, in order to preserve national unity and to promote response to the aspirations of the Myanmar people to democracy, peace, and development. I thank you, Madam President.
I think the distinguished representative of Qatar, and now I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Malaysia, followed by Australia, Ukraine, and India.
Madam President, at the outset, we would like to thank the President for convening this meeting. Malaysia associates itself with the statement delivered by the Kingdom of Saudi Arabia on behalf of the OIC. My delegation would also like to thank Special Envoy Christine Borgana for her briefing. Malaysia views with serious concern the military takeover in Myanmar on first February 2021 and the developments that have ensued. The military takeover is a setback for all the efforts towards unity and economic progress in the country. We call on the Myanmar military and all relevant parties to give utmost priority to the maintenance of peace and security in Myanmar, uphold the rule of law, and resolve any electoral discrepancies through established legal mechanisms and dialogue in a peaceful manner. Malaysia also reaffirms the strong support for Myanmar's democratic transition, peace process, and inclusive economic development. We call on the Myanmar authorities to uphold and respect democratic institutions and processes, the rule of law, human rights, and fundamental freedoms, including the right to a peaceful assembly and freedom of expression. All relevant parties should exercise restraint from the use of violence that could affect the safety of the members of the public and further escalate the situation in the country. Malaysia sincerely hopes that an amicable solution which upholds the will and aspiration of the people of Myanmar will be pursued promptly. We support efforts to reconcile the differences among Myanmar's leaders to avoid adverse consequences to the people and the State of Myanmar. Towards this end, Malaysia calls for the prompt release of detained political leaders, including Daowang Aung San Suu Kyi and His Excellency Wu Nguyen Min and their associate. Madam President, Malaysia hopes that the current situation in Myanmar will not have an adverse impact on the repatriation of displaced Rohingya. In this context, Malaysia supports Myanmar's continuous effort in delivering its commitment to begin and ensure effective repatriation and protect the human rights of the detainees. As a country directly impacted by the Rakhine State crisis, Malaysia will continue to support the ongoing efforts towards a safe, voluntary, dignified, and sustainable return of displaced Rohingya to their place of origin in the Rakhine State. Malaysia urges the international community to continue providing support to the Rohingya cause. Madam President, as a member of ASEAN, Malaysia looks forward to a return to normalcy in Myanmar. In this context, the Prime Minister of Malaysia and the President of the Republic of Indonesia had recently agreed that ASEAN should meet to address the current situation in the best way possible. Efforts are being undertaken in this regard within the ASEAN framework. Malaysia stands ready to work closely with the international community, including the United Nations Secretary-General and Special Envoy, as well as other UN mechanisms on this matter. In this context, we look forward to the realization of the proposed visit by the special envoy to Myanmar. I thank you.
I think the distinguished representative of Malaysia, and now I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Australia.
Madam President, we thank the special envoy for her briefing and for her tireless efforts, and we're grateful for the statement by the President of the General Assembly. And could I also acknowledge and thank our colleague from Myanmar for his contribution today, which can only be described as profound. Colleagues, Australia is deeply concerned about the situation in Myanmar. As a longstanding supporter of Myanmar's democratic transition and its peace process, we call on the military to respect the rule of law. We offer our condolences for the recent loss of life. The use of lethal force and violence against civilians is unacceptable. We strongly urge We strongly urge security forces to exercise restraint in response to peaceful protests. Madam President, Australian Professor Sean Turnbull was detained on February 6 after working to support Myanmar's economic development for many years. We continue to call for the immediate release of Professor Turnbull, Doan Sang Suci, President Yu Nguyen Min, and all others who have been arbitrarily detained since 1 February. Madam President, Australia's commitment to the people of Myanmar remains steadfast. We strongly urge the military to engage in dialogue and support the reconvening of the National Assembly the Myanmar people so clearly want. Australia remains concerned about the impact of recent events on the protracted humanitarian crises in Rakhine, Katchin, Shahn, Kayin, and Chin States. These crises disproportionately affect the most vulnerable, including women, children, and people with disabilities. We urge unhindered humanitarian access, and we strongly support a visit by the Special Envoy to Myanmar as soon as possible. Thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Australia, and now I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Ukraine.
Thank you, Madam President. Before I make my statement in international capacity, after we align ourselves with the European Union, I do salute my colleague Ambassador of Myanmar for his courage and his sincere appeal on behalf of his people. Ukraine is deeply concerned about the situation in Myanmar. The election of November 2020 was an important milestone in the path towards democratic transition. The will of the people must be respected, and any disputes with regard to validity and credibility of the results have to be resolved by peaceful means. We are also deeply concerned about the detention of Myanmar's political leaders, civil society activists, human rights defenders, journalists, and media workers. We call for an immediate and unconditional release of all those detained to end the state of emergency as well as to restore the rule of law. It is paramount to ensure respect for countries' international human rights obligations, including freedom of opinion and expression, association, and peaceful assembly. We also call for safe and unimpeded humanitarian access to all people in need, including the Rohingya and other minorities. We echo the UN Secretary-General's recent call on Myanmar's military to stop the repression immediately. Ukraine expresses its support to the activities of regional organizations, in particular, the Association of Southeast Asian Nations, and the Special Envoy of the Secretary-General of Myanmar for her good offices. Ukraine knows how painful it is when the choice of people is stolen by a corrupt regime. Hence, we stay strong with the democratic forces of Myanmar. It's people who are entitled to live according to their choice, under the leadership they elect. I commend the brave statement of the Ambassador of Myanmar and reiterate our offer of friendship that I made to him during our very amicable conversation when he arrived to New York. And I recall that some very important countries of the Security Council paid visit to Myanmar less than fortnight before the military coup, and we would like to hear from them if they can exercise their influence to impact the military regime there to return to the path of democracy, and I thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Ukraine, and now I give the floor to India, to be followed by China, Thailand, and New Zealand.
Thank you, Madam President. I thank you for organizing this important session, and thank Special Envoy Christine Burgner for her briefing on the latest developments in Myanmar. India shares a land and maritime border with Myanmar and has direct sticks in the maintenance of peace and stability. The recent developments in Myanmar are therefore being closely monitored by India. We remain deeply concerned that the gains made by Myanmar over the last decades on the path towards democracy should not get undermined. As the largest democracy, we have always been steadfast in our support to the process of democratic transition in Myanmar for it to emerge as a stable democratic federal union. A significant area of our focus has been capacity building, including in the areas of constitution and federalism for political leaders and elected representatives. We believe that the rule of law and democratic process must be upheld. Those detained be released, and that calm prevails. We call on the Myanmar leadership to work together to resolve their differences in a peaceful and constructive manner. India, as a close friend and neighbor of Myanmar and its people, will continue to closely monitor the situation and will remain in discussion with like-minded countries so that the hopes and aspirations of the people are respected. Restoring democratic order should be the priority of all stakeholders in Myanmar. The international community must lend its constructive support to the people of Myanmar at this critical juncture. Madam President, let me now turn to the issue of displaced persons from the Rakhine State of Myanmar. As the only country that shares a long border with both Bangladesh and Myanmar, India has the highest stake in resolving the issue of repatriation of the displaced persons. We have continued to counsel our partners on the need for a balanced and constructive approach to this issue. For this, mobilization of support for the developmental agenda of the local people is crucial. India has been consistently encouraging stakeholders to find practical and pragmatic solutions. Towards this end, our support has been for people on the ground at both Cox Bazaar and in the Rakhine State. We have contributed five tranches of aid to displaced people from Rakhine in Bangladesh and have formalized an arrangement with Myanmar to undertake developmental work in the Rakhine State under the Rakhine State Development Programme. Despite COVID restrictions, our efforts under this programme are ongoing and include handing over of houses, water and electricity supply projects, construction of roads, et cetera, in the Rakhine State. India has also entered into Trilateral Cooperation Project Agreement in the Rakhine State, and will be happy to cooperate with other partners in this regard. We have also embarked on an ambitious connectivity project being implemented in Rakhine and the Chin States of Myanmar for the benefit of the local population. This is reflective of our desire to find peace and stability in the region at the earliest and to ensure an early return of the displaced persons to Myanmar. Madam President, India comments Bangladesh for hosting a million displaced persons in its territory. It is important for the international community to recognize and understand the humanitarian burden that Bangladesh continues to face and the efforts it has undertaken to ensure the well-being of the displaced persons. The international community must further support, financially and otherwise, efforts of the government of Bangladesh, and also assist in ensuring that issues relating to radicalization in the camps and other security challenges are addressed in an expeditious manner. This should include making provisions for skill development, providing education, and ensuring adequate medical support. The issue of displaced persons from the Rakhine State of Myanmar needs an early resolution. We need to ensure that the recent developments in Myanmar do not impede the progress made so far. The international community must encourage and support positive steps. A collaborative and consensus-based approach is key to arrive at a meaningful and practical outcome. We must work to address the challenges that the concerned stakeholders continue to face so that this humanitarian problem is resolved in a timely manner. India will continue to work with both the governments of Bangladesh and Myanmar to enable the earliest return of displaced persons to their homes in the Rakhine State in a manner that is safe, speedy, and sustainable. In the difficult circumstances caused by COVID-19 pandemic, India has also been providing medical aid to both Myanmar and Bangladesh, including the supply of vaccines. We have so far provided 3.7 million doses of vaccines to Myanmar and 9 million doses to Bangladesh. Our commitment to our neighbors remains steadfast. India will continue to play a constructive role in this regard. I thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of India, and now I give the floor to the distinguished representative of China.
I thank you, Madam President. Madam President, China and Myanmar are friendly neighbors. China has been paying close attention to the development in Myanmar. We hope that all parties in Myanmar will act in the fundamental and long-term interests of the country, properly handle differences through dialogue and consultation under the constitutional and legal framework, maintain political and social stability, solve problems peacefully, problems that have occurred, and continue to promote the domestic democratic transformation process in an orderly manner. Under the current circumstances, all parties should maintain calm and restraint, refrain from intensifying tensions, escalating the situation, and using armed forces, violence, so as to prevent large-scale bloodshed. China is engaging right now and communicating with relevant parties in Myanmar to facilitate de-escalating the situation and returning to normalcy at an early date. What happened in Myanmar is, in essence, Myanmar's internal affairs. The international community should, on the premise of respecting Myanmar's sovereignty, political independence, territorial integrity, and national unity, help relevant parties in Myanmar to conduct dialogue and reconciliation in accordance with the wishes and interests of its people. The voice of and measures taken by the international community should help Myanmar parties bridge their differences and solve problems, and avoid intensifying tensions and further complicating the situation. Myanmar is a member of the ASEAN family. China supports ASEAN in playing an active role in easing the current state of affairs in Myanmar in the ASEAN way. China appreciates the mediation efforts of ASEAN countries. These countries are discussing the setting up of an informal special meeting of their foreign ministers, and we look forward to its early convening on the basis of consensus, thus providing a useful platform and opportunity for promoting problem-solving. We believe that ASEAN, as a mature regional organization, has enough political wisdom to help Myanmar tide over the difficulties. China also supports Special Envoy Christina Bergerner in continuing her mediation efforts, and hopes that she will keep the communication channels with all parties in Myanmar open, make extensive engagements, and actively promote peace and talks. The international community should create favorable conditions for her work and leave necessary space for her work. The problem of Rakhine State in Myanmar, in essence, should be resolved by Myanmar and Bangladesh through bilateral dialogue and consultation. We do not hope to see new difficulties in solving this problem due to the domestic situation in Myanmar. Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam President.
I thank the distinguished representative of China, and now I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Thailand.
Madam President, Madam Special Envoy, let me begin by expressing my appreciation to the Special Envoy of the Secretary-General. Thailand has long been a supporter of her work and will continue to do so as she exercises the constructive role of Special Envoy of the Secretary-General. We look forward to continuing working closely with her as she discharges her mandate. Thailand supports the statement by Brunei as ASEAN Chair on the 1st of February 2021. We have been consulting with other fellow ASEAN member states, including Myanmar, on how ASEAN can play a constructive role going forward. We welcome the commitment of Myanmar to engage closely with the ASEAN family. As a close neighbor sharing a long common border, Thailand wishes the best for Myanmar and therefore hope to see democracy, peace, and stability in Myanmar, as well as peaceful resolution of the situation and the return to normalcy for the interest of the people and sustainable development of Myanmar. I thank you, Madam President.
I thank the distinguished representative of Thailand, and now I give the floor to the distinguished representative of New Zealand, followed by Italy, Democratic Republic of Laos, and the Czech Republic.
Thank you, Madam President. New Zealand welcomes the convening of this meeting, and I would like to start by thanking the Special Envoy, Ms. Christine Schraner-Burgener, for her excellent briefing. She has New Zealand's full support. And I'd also like to warmly acknowledge the statement by the Myanmar representative on behalf of all democratic forces in his country. We stand by him and the people of Myanmar. Madam President, New Zealand condemns the military seizure of power in Myanmar. As a strong supporter of the rule of law and democratic process, New Zealand rejects the Tamadua's actions and calls for the immediate return to civilian government in Myanmar. New Zealand calls on the military government to immediately release all those arbitrarily detained, including political and civil society leaders, democracy activists, journalists and advisers, some of whom are also foreign nationals. New Zealand is deeply concerned by reports of violence and intimidation against protesters in Myanmar. We urge Myanmar's security forces to refrain from any use of violence or acts of intimidation against protesters. We strongly condemn any use of violence or intimidation against those expressing their fundamental rights of freedom of expression and the right to peaceful assembly. New Zealand urges Myanmar to cooperate with the Special Envoy, allowing access for the Special Envoy fully across Myanmar. Madam President, we welcome the General Assembly's attention on this issue, and we join with others encouraging Myanmar to work with the international community to address these concerns. I thank you, Madam President.
I thank the distinguished representative of New Zealand, and now I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Italy.
Madam President, Italy fully aligns itself with the statement of the EU delegation. I thank the Special Envoy of the Secretary-General for an excellent and comprehensive briefing, and I also wish to commend the Permanent Representative of Myanmar for his powerful and courageous statement. Madam President, since the beginning of the crisis, Italy, together with the EU and G7 partners, strongly condemned the military coup in Myanmar while calling for the restoration of its legitimate civilian government. We join in the Secretary-General's call for the Myanmar military to stop the repression immediately, to restore the country's democratically-elected government, and proceed with the immediate and unconditional release of all political leaders, civil society activists, and others who are arbitrarily detained. Witnessing the peaceful protest against the military's zero power and appalling violence then issued against the protesters shows us the importance of upholding at every turn the respect of human rights and fundamental freedoms, including the right to peacefully demonstrate in support of democratic institutions. For this, we call on Myanmar's military and police to exercise the utmost restraint. Unfortunately, even today's news from Myanmar confirm how dire and urgent the situation remains for ordinary people and peaceful protesters. Madam President, impunity for violence against Myanmar's ethnic minorities, including the Rohingya, must end. We call on the military authorities to allow free access to the country and across the region for humanitarian organizations and workers to provide the necessary assistance to minorities, including the Rohingya. Authorities must address the root causes of conflict and displacement in the Rakhine State and other areas, and ensure a safe and dignified return of refugees in accordance with international standards. Following the adoption of the EU Council conclusions on February 22, we started a thorough review of all the tools at the EU and its member states' disposal, including the adoption of restrictive measures targeting those responsible for the military coup. The final goal of this review shall be conducive to reinstate the elected civilian government, complete the process of democratic transition and national reconciliation, as well as ensuring inclusive socio-economic development. In this regard, we welcome the UN Secretary- In this regard, we welcome the UN Secretary General's engagement and support for the efforts of his Special Envoy. We turn to the international community, countries, regions, and organisations, and in particular to ASEAN and its members, whom we believe have a crucial role to play in promoting peace and stability in Southeast Asia. We encourage their efforts for establishing a constructive dialogue with Myanmar for the benefit of its people. Italy has always been committed to advancing Myanmar's democratic transition and the national reconciliation process. This is no time to accept failure. I thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Italy, and now I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Laos People's Democratic Republic.
Madame President, as an immediate neighbour and ASEAN fellow, the Laopedia has closely followed the developments in Myanmar. We reiterate the importance of maintaining the political stability in ASEAN member states to achieve a peaceful, stable, and prosperous ASEAN community. We are of the view that the international community should create an environment conducive for Myanmar to resolve its internal differences and carry out reconciliation through peaceful means in order to continue its democratisation process and national development. Thank you, Madame President.
I thank the distinguished representative of Laos People's Democratic Republic, and now I give the floor to the Czech Republic, to be followed by Argentina, Republic of Korea, and Netherlands.
Thank you, Madame President. The Czech Republic aligns itself with the EU statement. Today's informal meeting of the General Assembly is being held because of the urgency and seriousness of current developments in Myanmar, which are fatally detrimental to democracy, peace, and prosperity of this country and threaten stability in the region. The Czech Republic strongly condemns the military coup. We support the country's legitimate democratically-elected leadership and call for respect of last year's elections. So far, more than 690 persons have been detained and arrested, including President Vinmin, State Councilor An San Sutchi, one of the NLD leaders Vintain, members of the civil society, as well as monks, writers, journalists, media workers, and human rights defenders. We call for their immediate and unconditional release. We condemn violence committed by Myanmar's military and police forces against any peaceful protesters. We call upon relevant authorities and all security forces to exercise full restraint. Human rights, fundamental freedoms, and international law must be respected and protected in Myanmar. The Czech Republic condemns the intimidation and oppression of those opposing the coup. Any threats or use of force against people exercising their rights to peacefully protest and participate in public affairs across the country must be avoided. Targeting of protesters, journalists, and representatives of the civil society, internet shutdowns and blockages of social media are unacceptable and must be instantly and permanently ceased, and the state of emergency must be revoked. We urge the military in Myanmar to listen to the international pleas, accept an internal offer for mediation, fully cooperate with all UN mechanisms, and enable free and safe access to humanitarian assistance. Massive protests and civil disobedience movements taking place in cities and towns across the country are a clear expression of a strong public opposition to the coup. We call upon the military to respect the will of the people of Myanmar expressed in the November 2020 parliamentary elections. Civilian government must be reinstated. I thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of the Czech Republic, and now I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Argentina.
Thank you very much, Madame President. At the outset, the Republic of Argentina would like to thank you for convening this meeting of the General Assembly. And the Special Envoy, the Secretary General for Myanmar, Miss Bergner, for her briefing. Argentina wishes to express its deep concern regarding the breakdown of institutional order in Myanmar and the serious and negative impact this is having on human rights. Based upon recent tensions and detentions of leaders, political leaders, journalists, civil rights leaders, and activists and others, restrictions on the freedom of information and expression, including access to social networks and the internet, restrictions on the freedom of assembly and persecution of minorities are of concern. We wish to call for respect for the results of the elections of the 8th of November 2020, and for the detainees to recover their freedom immediately and that there be respect for constitutional order, the rule of law, and democratic institutions in Myanmar. We also urge military leaders in Myanmar to fully uphold international human rights law and abstain from the use of force unnecessarily, arbitrarily, or excessively. Also, to cooperate actively with the human rights protection mechanisms in force. Madam President, to conclude, we urge the international community to redouble its efforts for a swift resolution of this difficult situation in Myanmar, as was recently stated by Ms. Michelle Bachelet, the High Commissioner of the United Nations for Human Rights. We must avoid a downfall and erosion of the fragile democratic progress and human rights progress made in this country during its transition from the military regime. We must ensure that this tragedy does not take place. Thank you very much.
Representative of Argentina, and now I give the floor to the distinguished representative of the Republic of Korea.
Thank you, President. I'd like to thank the Special Envoy for the informative and timely briefing today and her strong commitments. My appreciation also goes to the delegation of Myanmar for the powerful and moving statement. My delegation expresses its deep concern over the current political situation in Myanmar. We are alarmed by reports of casualties following violent crackdowns on protesters in Myanmar, and my government extends its deep condolences to the victims and the sincere consolation to the bereaved family. My delegation strongly calls on authorities to refrain from excessive and unnecessary violence against the protesters and to fully respect the freedom of assembly and freedom of expression of the Myanmar people. We hope that democracy will be restored in Myanmar in a peaceful manner, in adherence with a lawful and democratic process, and that the aspirations of the people of Myanmar for democracy, as it demonstrated in the general elections held last November, will be fully respected. The Korean government will continue to pay close attention to the developments in Myanmar together with the international community, will further strengthen its cooperation with the Office of the Special Envoy, and also fully support a visit by Special Envoy to Myanmar. I thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of the Republic of Korea, and now I give the floor to the distinguished representative of the Netherlands, to be followed by the Russian Federation, Philippines, and Mexico.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Miss Bergner, for your earlier briefing and for sounding the alarm, and I strongly believe that that alarm has been heard loud and clear in this assembly today. And I will also add my voice to the many colleagues who have commended the representative from Myanmar for his courageous statement on behalf of democracy in his country. The Kingdom of the Netherlands aligns itself with the EU statement, and we would like to add a few remarks in our national capacity. Madam President, the military coup has dramatically reversed Myanmar's path towards democracy, less than a decade after the country began to steer away from half a century of military rule. The Kingdom of the Netherlands stands in solidarity with peaceful protesters, civil society, human rights defenders, journalists, and others who are risking their lives by continuing to express their firm commitment to a democratic rule in which fundamental freedoms are upheld. Like others, we strongly condemn the military coup and military and police repression, harassment, and the use of violence against peaceful protesters. The Netherlands calls for the immediate end to the state of emergency, the restoration of the legitimate civilian government, and the opening of the newly-elected parliament. The military must immediately and unconditionally release all those who have been arbitrarily detained and sentenced. We are also deeply concerned about restrictions on freedoms of expression, association, and assembly, including through draconian changes to the law which are not in line with international obligations and the right to access to information. The people of Myanmar cannot be excluded from shaping and sharing thoughts about the future of their country. Journalists, human rights activists, and other members of civil society should be able to work without fear of reprisals, of intimidation, or attack. Justice for victims is crucial. Those responsible for violence against peaceful protesters must be held accountable. Perpetrators of international crimes cannot get away with the horrific crimes they've committed. The Netherlands recalls the International Court of Justice Provisional Measures orders in which my country has intervened, the ongoing international criminal court investigation, and the work of the independent investigative mechanism for Myanmar. We must also not forget to continue working on creating the conditions necessary for the safe, voluntary, sustainable, and dignified return of the Rohingya. In conclusion, Madam President, the Netherlands reiterates its support to the Special Envoy's efforts to create space for dialogue, and we urge the military leaders to cooperate and grant full access to the Special Envoy. She has our full support. Thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of the Netherlands, and now I give the floor to the distinguished representative of the Russian Federation.
Thank you, President. The Russian Federation has been closely following developments in Myanmar. We'd like to note that the resolution of disputes between Myanmar political forces is an exclusively internal process of this sovereign state. Any attempts to turn the consideration of recent events in the country, in terms of the announcement of state of emergency, into a human rights issue is unjustified and politicised. Myanmar has a resolution. It remains in force, as do all constitutional and legislative norms as regards political and civil rights and freedoms. We haven't heard of any steps that have been taken to review or revoke the normative legal foundation nor mechanisms for promoting and protecting human rights and freedoms. We welcome the confirmation of the authorities in Myanmar to their commitment to international obligations and their efforts to extend cooperation with the UN. I'd like to, of course, that looking at a constructive and mutually respectful dialogue between Myanmar and the Special Envoy of the UN is a vital and irreplaceable condition to solve problems that exist. We support the focus of the Myanmar authorities to address the situation in Rakhine, which supports dialogue between the UN and human rights bodies. We're convinced that this will allow to stabilise the situation in the region and not allow an escalation for violence. In conclusion, I'd like to recall that the Russian Federation believes so-called country resolutions at the Third Committee are counterproductive and politicised. One specimen of this is the Resolution 75238, which was not adopted by consensus, Situation of Human Rights in Rohingya, Muslims, and other minorities in Myanmar, which is used to justify today's meeting. The aim of this resolution is far from, with nothing resembling mutually respectful dialogue and constructive cooperation to address human rights, it's used, but it is rather exerting political pressure on individual UN member states. We cannot agree with such an approach. Thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of the Russian Federation, and now I give the floor to the Philippines, to be followed by Mexico, Spain, and Israel.
Thank you, Madam President. We thank the Special Envoy, Christine Bergner, for her briefing. The Philippines had always been supportive of her mandate and the important and challenging work she has undertaken, including the establishment of confidence-building measures. The Philippines is supportive of Myanmar's progress towards a fuller democracy, cognisant of the army's role in preserving Myanmar's territorial integrity and national security, as well as the unifying role of Doong San Sutchi in the history of the country and the army her father founded. Doong San Sutchi is a deeply and widely admired icon of democracy among Filipinos who identify with her and her people, given similar struggles against tyranny in the not-so-distant past, struggles that culminated in the complete restoration of democracy by the unprecedented and entirely domestic efforts that inspired similarly successful efforts in other parts of the world. The Philippines calls for a return to a status quo ante whereby democratic processes can continue in accordance with the will of the Myanmar people. Myanmar made important strides towards democratisation in the past decade with the political presence of Doong San Sutchi, constitutional constraints on her key political role notwithstanding. As a sovereign country in a world of sovereign states, the Philippines cannot overemphasise the primacy of national internal efforts towards democratic reforms, and never by the imposition of foreign solutions, whether in regional or multilateral contexts. We reaffirm our support of the sovereignty and territorial integrity of Myanmar. Thank you, Madam President.
I thank the distinguished representative of the Philippines, and now I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Mexico.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Mexico thanks the Special Envoy, the Secretary General for Myanmar, for her briefing this morning and her report on the situation in Myanmar. The government of Mexico reiterates its deep concern regarding the events in Myanmar and echoes the condemnation of the United Nations Secretary General regarding the arbitrary detention of political and social leaders in the country. Mexico joins the call for the immediate liberation of democratically-elected civilian leaders and other social leaders detained over recent weeks. We reject attempts to reverse the democratic progress made and to ignore the will of the people of Myanmar. Mexico fully believes that democracy, the respect for human rights, the rule of law, and inclusive dialogue are the only manner to achieve peace and prosperity. We therefore launch an insistent call upon all political and social stakeholders in Myanmar to establish an inclusive, constructive dialogue in full constitutional order. As an elected member of the Security Council, Mexico will support multilateral and regional actions to move forwards in this direction. Mexico echoes the condemnation of the use of violence against those who are demonstrating peacefully. We urge the authorities in Myanmar to fully respect human rights, including rights to the freedom of expression and of assembly. Likewise, we urge the authorities in Myanmar to allow unhindered humanitarian access, including for the Rohingya population in Rakhine State and other minorities. We underscore in this regard the importance of fair, safe access to health services, essential medicines, and the Covid-19 vaccine. Finally, Madam President, and in line with Resolution 75238, we call upon all the parties, including the agencies of the UN system, to redouble their efforts to establish the necessary conditions so that refugees and other forcibly displaced persons can return to their places of origin or choice in a voluntary, sustainable, safe, and dignified way. Thank you very much.
I thank the distinguished representative of Mexico, and now I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Spain.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Spain aligns itself with the statement made by the European Union. At the outset, allow me to express our gratitude for this specific meeting being held on Myanmar in the General Assembly. The United Nations must respond with alacrity to this kind of situation. Spain categorically condemns the seizure of power in Myanmar by its military and calls for the immediate and unconditional liberation of all those who are being arbitrarily detained, and the lifting of the state of emergency and the re-establishment of civil authority immediately. We also call upon the army and other authorities and security forces to exercise restraint in the use of force, particularly during peaceful demonstrations. We also call for the respect for and protection of all human rights. The government must cooperate with international human rights protection mechanisms. Spain supports the work of the Special Representative, the Secretary General for Myanmar, Christine Schraner, and the UN Special Reporters. We support the report of the Independent Investigation Mission published
We support the report of the independent investigation mission published in September We call upon the authorities in Myanmar to take into account its conclusions and recommendations. Spain supports the transition process towards democracy in Myanmar with the commitment of finding a solution within the framework of democratic institutions within the country and in line with the purposes and principles established in the charters of the United Nations and of ASEAN. In this regard, it will be fundamental that there is no discrimination against anybody for their ethnic origin, including Rohingya Muslims, and that the full participation of civil society is guaranteed. Spain thus calls for respect for the right to peaceful assembly, free use of social networks and that detainees be immediately brought before a court. Thank you very much.
I thank the distinguished representative of Spain, and now I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Israel, to be followed by Gambia and South Africa.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to thank the PGA for convening today's important meeting. I'd also like to thank the special envoy, Ms. Christine Schreiner Bergner, for her briefing and for her tireless effort to support the democratization process in Myanmar. We support the special envoy's work and hope that she will be granted access to visit Myanmar as soon as possible. Madam President, Israel has been closely following the situation in Myanmar since the declaration of the state of emergency imposed by the military on February 1st. We are deeply concerned by reports of continued violence and the arrest of democratically-elected members of government, including head of state An San Suu Kyi and President Vinmin. We call for their immediate release. Israel is further concerned by the restrictions that have been placed on civil society and on internet and communication services. Madam President, Israel will continue to support and stand by the people of Myanmar and their pursuit for democracy. We call for the end of all violence in the country and for the preservation of peace, fundamental freedoms and the rule of law. Thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Israel, and now I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Gambia.
Thank you, Madam President. Allow me to associate our delegation with the statement delivered by the Ambassador of Saudi Arabia on behalf of the OIC. Madam President, we strongly condemn the coup that took place in Myanmar, and we take this opportunity to thank the special envoy of the Secretary General for her comprehensive briefing on the situation in Myanmar. We are deeply concerned about the events in Myanmar, particularly the deterioration of human rights since the illegal government takeover by the junta. We call on the junta to immediately restore democracy in Myanmar and desist from violating the human rights of its citizens. Democracy must be restored and the rights of citizens to demonstrate must be respected. We have had our own experience of a losing regime that negated the will of the people, and the strong support of the international community made all the difference. Madam President, we call on the junta to release all detainees, including President Vinmin and Doong San Suu Kyi. There is absolutely no justification to use of power in total disregard for the will of the people. The elections were legitimately won, and the results must be respected. A strong message must be sent to the junta that their actions are unacceptable. We are deeply disturbed by the use of brutal force against peaceful citizens. We further call on the junta to stop violating the human rights of the Rohingya people and other ethnic minorities. The junta must be held accountable for all violations of human rights of the people, including the Rohingya Muslims. The provisional measures ordered by the ICJ must be fully and faithfully implemented. Impunity is not an option. We are also deeply worried about the reports of the deployment of the brutal 33rd Light Infantry Division of the military who were involved in oppressing the Rohingya Muslims being deployed in this operation of peaceful demonstrations. The international community must uphold and defend the will of the people of Myanmar, who are currently in a very tough place. The military takeover should not be used as a pretext to escape or avoid accountability for the egregious human rights violations committed against the Rohingya people. At this stage, Madam President, I would like to raise a question or two for the special envoy. I hope she's still with us. Since the coup and the unfortunate events that followed, whether she shares the view that the Rohingya minorities have become even more vulnerable to serious human rights violations, and as just observed by the representative of Myanmar, the likelihood of people being exposed to war crimes and crimes against humanity, including the Rohingya and other minorities, what is her take on that? And we are also worried about the denial of access to the special envoy and the efforts that have been deployed so far to deny people access to information or control access to the internet, whether these are pretexts for cover-up for human rights violations, and what is her take on the current space for dialogue within the region and with the junta? And also, what is her expectation of the junta's cooperation with the UN? I thank you, Madam President.
I thank the distinguished representative of Gambia, and now I give the floor to the distinguished representative of South Africa.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We thank the President of the General Assembly for convening this meeting today. We also wish to congratulate the special envoy for her opening remarks and the briefing to all of us. The government of South Africa regretted and noted with serious concern the detention of State Councilor Doong San Suu Kyi and other political leaders on the eve of the opening of Myanmar's parliament. We called for her immediate release and the return of the rule of law. We believe that the developments in Myanmar undermine the democratic reforms following the general elections held on 8th November 2020. South Africa therefore calls upon the military in Myanmar to respect the rule of law. We firmly believe that any political differences should be resolved through an inclusive and peaceful dialogue. South Africa will continue to support the people of Myanmar in their pursuit of democracy, peace, human rights and the rule of law. We also urge the authorities to cooperate and give access to the special envoy. I thank you, Madam Chair.
I thank the distinguished representative of South Africa, who was the last speaker on my list. And now I would like to give the floor to Ms. Christine Bergner, the special envoy of the Secretary General on Myanmar, to respond to the questions and issues raised by member states.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I would like to give first an answer to the representative of Gambia. He asked about the situation of the Rohingya. I assume that the attempted coup disrupted and dismantled the efforts led by the NLD government in northern Rakhine, creating conditions conducive for successful refugee return. I also noted with concern that the military started to investigate Kofi Annan's Advisory Commission on Rakhine State's report, reportedly for corruption, and this is disturbing. Clearly, also, the access has to be given to those in need in Rakhine, and I urged in my meetings with the tamado, with the army, I had twice discussions with the deputy commander-in-chief since the coup happened. So I urged him to give access, but also to give all access to the internet, which is important for freedom of speech. So I will continue to discuss with the army to allow that the Rohingya will have conducive conditions in Rakhine, but clearly, I want to see the elected government in place who has the responsibility to continue their efforts, like closing the IDP camps in Rakhine and to give all the rights back to the Rohingya. I would like to thank the member states for the high support they expressed today to me and to my mandate, and please let me allow also to thank especially to the member states who gave me generously extra budgetary contributions, namely from Norway, Switzerland, Republic of Korea and Denmark, and I would like to thank...